Use the lift like you're on a summer journey.
I believe that ain't the spot now. I did hear the storms like that. I saw the wind, ooh, I got, I got it. It's found in the pavement itself.
Found the pavement itself, now I got this.
That's east and west of us.
What?
Is that east or west of us?
East of all.
East of the curves, that east.
Should, should. He's having his. I just threw it like this. I just recycle that, it's not going yet.
I'll take that.
I'll be proud. I do too. Look up the smell. Oh, you know, cider. Are you? Say, you work this way. Zero or six inches. And what, what, what did they do?
Yeah.
We'll know by Thursday, Friday.
They know the point I didn't get it.
When is that supposed to start though? Saturdays.
Saturday. Yeah. Is that Friday night? Friday night in Nebraska. And it's actually coming down.
I think maybe next Monday too, possibly.
So Ben, is that where your guys on call, they're looking at snow? I'm just.
I see you go to Toledo. And Sam, is that my? But then.
Oh yeah, don't love that with the holiday weekend.
We got, we got invited up to the daughters up. We told them, supporting us, we'll be there unless Dan's on call.
We might as well leave.
At eight thirty, little Ben's just starting with the pledge.
Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America. Consider the republic, our wishes, saints, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Thing we need to do is. Seconded. All losing favors say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, most in curious. Of the comments. Good here.
I'm going to go completely off the agenda and I'm going to bring up this middle school in Toledo. Which is not anything you guys are going to do about right this minute, but you need to be aware of. And if that thing ends up empty, which is the MO for. What's going on with these companies that are buying these things? I, I read the whole thing, it sounded just like the stuff we listen to from. Uh, the Florida men that were selling us the winds projects. It either could end up like the hospital in Marshalltown. Filled with, we don't know who lives there. And or. It could end up with quote, quote international students and or. It could end up with a bunch of um. Takeover from within without a shot being fired for you. So I want you guys, I realize that a lot of the um. I realize that a lot of the public in this end of the county don't really pay attention to this kind of stuff. But this is extremely serious. I mean, like, wait, it should like be on the top of everybody's priority list as to what happens with that school. Um, there was one man that did want to buy the school in Tama. And move that. Bunch of meetings and, and whatever they're doing over in Tama, the partnership center over to here, which makes perfectly good sense to me. I realize I should be saying this, it's a school board meeting. But as supervisors, you guys have a lot of power. I do see that SOKOL does, is having some reservations about what happens to this school in Toledo and. It could be a disaster. Within a year. Um, we don't want it standing empty, we don't want it. Disintegrating and we don't want it full of internationals. Because those people are not here for us. And I don't really, I don't know how well five of you feel about that. I don't even know if you've been paying attention to it. But this is an extremely serious uh situation. And I wanted to bring it to your attention because I believe tonight is a school board meeting. And um takeover from within without a shot being fired. And most people are not old enough to remember that. But by gosh. This front row people right, this, these two rows of people right here are. And this is scary, this is really scary. And what happens tonight? John Kane is not from here. What happens tonight? Would mean the destruction for this community really quickly. Thank you.
Anybody else? Successfully proved the seventeen twenty-five, it's eleven eighteen, suspicious.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most in curious.
One more.
See, but uh, we've been receiving rock from Salt Creek. Um, in. So well. ECI, they. Seven. Should be finishing up. Direct. Be a couple of weeks till that's open. And that's there on E sixty-six. Um, they're finishing up. Chilling for that project. They should be painting the lines here today or tomorrow. Weather depending. Um, and then the contractor anticipates they're will be open by Wednesday, so. We'll have. That'll be good for Thanksgiving traffic and all of that. That's something, so. Um, we received bids for the three hundredth street bridge, which is uh, we share with Toledo. Uh, on that northwest side. Uh, Ridge Road, as some people call it, a little bit was below what our city bridge grant fund um covers. So it was lower than the one point five. Um, I'll be bringing that um to, to, to be recommended to approve, approve that um contract next week, so. So, uh, yeah, weather wise, I guess we kind of talked a little bit, but. Um, we're getting wing posts on our grader soon. Thanks for, or I'll turn. So just getting that kind of all, but ready to go. Ready to go, this clear weather spell like this. So. That's all I got. Stick around for the.
We'll move on to the next item then. Discussion and possible action unprocessed for releasing roads.
Yeah, it's just been a topic, we've just been kind of casually bringing up about the Salt Creek Phase One roads. Um, when do we release them, how do we go about that? Um, so I think that's something I just wanted to have the board get together. I know a while back, um, Ben, they were going to maybe release. One and two tower ones. I haven't heard anything since then, so I was wondering, I guess, an update. Um, because it looks like in the. Road use agreement, all parties have to agree, it's in uh page five eighteen B. So I, I think we need also from supervisors. Signed off on the road use agreement, I think it's a collective between you and, and us, so I wanted to get an update on that.
Just have, there's a few roads that um they wanted to release. Um, and I've, I've told them that. Um, I guess it was my assumption that I could. Release them, but then I was gonna tell them. Those few roads there on that avenue, one main street, it's E Avenue. Um, that I have. We have started maintaining. I've told them, we would like to have a three hundred ton a mile on those stretches uh in the spring. That looks like for payment.
And that will be mostly contract.
Yes, correct, yep, yep.
So you mean by payment, like, so they'll pay us now that amount and then we put rock down or they would do it?
Payment would be for. Contract rock, so it'd be, that's, that's what we're trying to. They're going to stockpile a certain amount of rock, um, and they're wanting to. Use that rocks to. You know, put on these roads that they've, you know, taken from the radiuses and whatnot. So they've used some of that rock for those roads. Um, I had sent them a. Email last week telling them kind of the cost that would be pretty much for new rock. And for um the trucking for that and then our cost of having our guys kind of. Typically with our contract, we have about three guys-ish. Um, yeah, taking tickets, making sure they're putting the loads down in the right area. We got a motor grader right on, right there to lay that out. So that, that's where I sent them um last week. Um, and so they were, they came back with wanting to. Uh, stockpile rock and kind of match that. So I'm still working with them, that's what's happening right now to make sure we get. My goal is to not have, you know, whatever we're going to be paying in the spring, they would be taken care of. Um, cost wise, um, because I'm not wanting to put down rock now where. Um, we're going to probably lose it with, it's not really going to knit in and whatnot, so. And I want to have, you know. Three hundred tons a mile at least for most of these roads.
Mm-hmm. So here's, yeah.
Can we just not release until next spring? Only issue I have is our gun is there. When. I was just like releasing it for us to maintain, but I wasn't like fully releasing it, like. That's what I was trying to get at, so our guys could actually maintain the roads better than that, what they were doing. Or like, you know, they were. You know, more focused on the wind turbines and whatnot, and so it'd be like a month or so more. In time period of when they maintained it, so I was trying to get some of our guys out there before winter hit, so.
Yeah, I think we need something like in, in a contract or an amendment kind of to actually like detail out these things, like he's saying, like you guys will push no, but.
That's in the, that's in the. There's we can add.
But if you're adding, if you're releasing it though, but it's contingent on, it's released and they, once they're all done, you know, I, I guess we need it. Set in stone into my, my mind wraps around, what if we just have like a really wet? Um, winter, where it just constantly the roads are wet, but not that completely frozen. My personal thought is, and you road guys can correct me, but take some of this widened corner rock and put it down and they have rollers, like roll it down. To where there's something, because I'm going to get a lot of road complaints if there's nothing on the roads and they're all tore up, right? And so I think it'd be nice to have a little something and then get that, like, if they could pay us in advance would be best, but try to get that clean rock. And it's in a contract, whether we get the money now or that it's going to come next spring, that we get the nice roads with the rock next year. So that's kind of my thought, but I don't know what you guys think, but.
They want to stop. The children. Diesel fuel and. Pay for, the pay that we're paying our employees to spread.
As far as this is.
So that's when I was. When I had sent them that email on stuff, it was over, yes, what we typically cost for our contract rock guys to like haul. That's their, their, all their costs, their, you know, fuel and, you know, hey, we're. You've got twenty-four miles, you know, we've got ten mile for. Ten miles, it's three dollars and seventy cents for a ten mile haul and then ten miles over, it's twenty cents added to that, so. It's like six, six and a half, um, roughly. Right now, the mass probably not folded right, but six and a half is what we're, you know, paying for somebody to. They're taking the rock from the quarry and putting it to here, so about six and a half dollars a ton. Um, to haul it to point, point A to point B, right? So. Just maybe rephrase your question again, I probably didn't answer it. Make your one eighty. What was that number then? Like you. They won't plan on leasing any of those till the spring. Is out, just because, what about the quarry road and then the highway? But C I, four and then where is that, two hundred? Is that one two hundred? That goes to T forty-seven.
Yeah. That wasn't.
To the court, went to the court.
Yeah.
Pumped up from Paul and group.
Yep. So. I mean, that should, I don't, yeah, they should have to close out on that too, I mean, you know, there's a lot of.
A lot of. We have, we did a lot of patching in that area. We did or they did. We did the patching for T forty-seven and then they're going to pay for it, I'll guess.
So when you said six and, six and a half per ton. And that's per mile?
No.
Yeah, that's. Come on, right?
Yes.
Three hundred. So you're talking a radio triple load is what, about sixteen tons, fourteen?
Fourteen?
With sixteen, there's a hundred and four bucks a mile. Right?
Hmm?
So let me go back into my math again, because I'll be a hard. They're charging, they were charging me for sixteen tons, so maybe I got. Close over its hundreds. You said fourteen? It's ninety-one dollars a mile. Just to haul it. Not a lot, that's a load. A load, okay. But he's talking. That's pretty small. That's about a truckload, a truckload, and how many truckloads to put down? Maybe three hundred tons for that a mile. First of all, I thought they were dumping the rock there just because they needed a place to put it. I didn't realize they were, they're going to take it back. Fix the road, our roads, I thought that was going to be ours most they dumped it. So that's not the case, correct? Keep that, they're going to use that as payment. Or allow somebody else to haul it up.
Just worried about doing that next spring, because this, this road was from the kind of, I'd say junk quarry anyway, and then it's had all the truck traffic and cranes on it. It's not going to be that good of rock, I would rather, like I said, put that stuff down now and then they come put good rock in spring. And wait to release, only release for like blading, blading and snow removal.
So trying to, I'll fix my thought.
Yep, so.
So. I don't want, I don't want us to release these until like Penney says, until. The winter's over and when it's spring, we know to put the rooms alive. So it goes back to who is the ultimate standing up of the. We were a good engineer, you tell us, hey, it looks good. And we said, okay, Ben, we trust you, yes. But at least that protects the county. Because if they're piling it on our property and then we're expected to go on the spring. Then they're going to, we're going to find somebody else to, to spread it and then charge them for that company doing the work. Correct? If we're doing it, it goes back to what was being said down here about diesel and. And our employees also, how is that going to impact the rest of the work that we're expecting you guys to do?
Yeah, that, that's why I wanted to, yeah, a contractor doing it, because I didn't, obviously, if we're going to focus all on that, then, but. We can't, I don't.
Just, I'm also look long range, looking for these other kind of consequences, because if we got our staff. Fixing these roads and then something else crops up, what kind of diversion happens? To us maintaining and taking care of the officials that are paying the taxes for all of this. So I mean, again, I think we need to maybe, I don't know if we need to sit down and have a, a talk through on this. At a, another date where we can. Push numbers and ask questions and.
Oh, what has to happen is. In your mind.
And there should be pictures and videos too.
And that's, I mean, that's up to you, sure, sure, uh. And. Yeah, what was done.
No.
Money, you know, and you know that, yeah, so.
I just don't want to re-release it too soon.
Right, oh yeah.
And I say we don't release it till after spring, till they're done.
So is there, is there a problem? With us. Clearing snow if we don't release them?
No, because that's part of the.
Okay, all right, yeah, I. Say just wait till the spring, so they.
And even the maintaining roads, it can be either, right? The county can also still maintain the roads if they're not released, correct? I don't know how much maintaining there's left of the year, but.
Yeah, I believe. And you know.
I, I see what they're trying to do, I don't, I'm not saying it's sort of bad, like. They're supposed to be done, but they're projected to be done before December's over. And so I can see from, from their side of the house, they're wanting to be done with the contract and. To get, you know, get everything signed off so they could go on and demobilize and whatever the else they do.
Yeah, I know, but are they leaving it with this other phase, are they even leaving or no?
Don't know.
It appears.
Well, and as long as we have that financial backing, even if they physically leave, you know, like said, Ben gets it, like, I just want to see things in writing, like that. They're going to do this and they're going to pay for that contract rock and it's going to be new rock and, you know, I just want to see details and things in writing so we make sure that it's all kosher.
Okay, so. Once the project is complete, is it? So we can't release a road till the project is. After the project is complete and hauling operations have been permanently ceased, that hasn't had any.
All right.
You shall promptly and jointly inspect the damages. The project is complete. We'd like to have a supervisor in you.
Yeah.
If it works for you.
Yeah.
That we would inspect with their crews. To look at any kind of repair work that. It's an eighteen B.
Hurry, be less busy by then, you're a road guy, if you could help out, that would be awesome.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Go right with them, yes.
Yeah.
Thanks for clearing that up. We just need to be clear about, well, we either, when we sign off, we say it, oh, it's good, for sure it's good.
Yep, so we can't, can't release roads, type of the project is over, this is the quarter, it's our contract.
What it says. If we lost, I lost.
Well, just in that same eighteen B, it just said, it was exactly what you're reading, once constructional project is complete and hauling operations are permanently ceased. The party shall promptly and jointly inspect and if you look at the road use agreement, the supervisor signed off on it. Dan Anderson there, whether it was the. So when you look at the back, the party is Dan Anderson, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep, so Dan's got to come back in it now. So I would just say it says party, so that's where if we have the curts and then that should be sufficient.
Okay.
As long as Ben, if you're good with that, then. Well, we, it's up to you, we need a motion, but. Sounds like all as well. And then, yeah, just get that in writing, but obviously we need to wait till that project is done around end of December and then. You guys go drive it and then bring back to us what your thoughts are and get everything in writing at that point. Save us a lot of headaches later, I know you're doing what you need to do, we just got to make sure we're covered here.
Thirty-one C says on like. So we're talking about, that's. It's a loose protocol. But so.
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Um, you know, this is going down there.
There's a lot of joint areas where it says both, yeah.
But we don't get to that.
And then all of the, earlier you're talking about the widened roads when they're tearing that back up and it's going to Garland. Do we get all that rock then? I take it on every widened corner, is that all for us or not? So I know there's the driveways that the landowners have, but there's also the wide corners, I didn't know what the county gets back.
Anybody did it, I mean. Trying to decide.
I guess a lot of people, guys said, can you just get the line and they can fill them, we can haul wherever.
Sure.
They would be in.
So now, Simon. Think of your biggest tractor.
I'm just worried if we wait too much till spring and don't do anything, you guys be the judge of that when you look at it, is there certain areas where you could at least use that? Hold off the widen to do something.
Ton, we, you know, get it good enough or get us through winter, spring. It sure would be nice to have it, it's comfortable, we're going to, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and for sure the haul routes, that's all the, the biggest destruction, you know, it'd be good to get something on those.
Yeah, so I suppose as soon as they're done, then we'll.
But I guess what do you look at? I guess what do we consider done, because I know that they're. They've got all of them up now. I guess if they're, once they're operational, we'd consider that complete, I would assume whenever they say they're done.
Yeah, they, they should write us some kind of, I would, I mean, we didn't ask for, with phase one, but it'd be nice to get a letter like, hey, we're done, or maybe.
I mean.
It seems like they get them up and then there's several every day by like almost every turbine doing something, even if it's a pickup or a, you know.
So when they say they're done, we have our six hundred thousand dollars and there's a, everybody sign off, that's done.
Yeah, we'll get that, won't we, yeah?
Yep, and then we have to promptly look at the roads at that.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
And there's still a lot of. A lot of the uh roads out to the turbines, like they put gravel down, then they tear it all back up, then they put like, it's been like several times, so that's still large equipment, you still got your. You know, unloaders and your maintainers and that's still going to tear up the roads, so.
Till they've got all the equipment.
Yeah.
They're not.
Yep.
Yeah, stay up to the end, yeah. Because moving the cranes, moving all that equipment, the bedding, the. Stuff, that's going to tear up.
Thanks, Ben.
Do we want a motion? Anything?
Do we need one? To say, I don't think we, all we do is clarify what's already in the.
I think I thought it was a motion to follow the contract, but we already are. What about, um. What about a motion that we approved, the release of roads here? Like you guys go and check them out and the full board release and. We'll say, I was at it, and then we, I talked, we talked to the rest of the board and then we release them, I would feel more comfortable, I will.
Let's do it, yeah. Right, but we don't have to have motions today for that. So let's just do it.
I'll make a motion that we, after looking at the roads. We will bring it back to the board as a full board and approve to accept it or deny it. And or fix it. Does that sound good?
Oh, seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is that your?
Okay.
More clarity than bitter. Oh. Secondary roads, that's good.
I don't have much. I don't have much either, uh, because we kind of have.
I don't have much either, uh, we kinda have.
It's been real.
Between him and I, he had things going, Ben was gone, I had things going, so I'll, we'll get with Ben here. Get you guys an update, see what we're at with that. Listened.
Okay.
Yeah, see what we got next.
Okay, go for it.
Discussion of possible action on closed session checklist for Tama County. This came as a, we'll have a couple of different items to go through. The first one is the closed session checklist. This came out of. Uh, during, when we went into a closed session, um. That resulted in the termination of Ms. Wise. This checklist. Has been agreed to that we would go basically, it's part of a. Uh, maybe. It's outlined, it's outlined in section or code section twenty-one. There was a dispute as to whether there was a official request for the closed session from the employee when we went in. Uh, one party said that, um, it was agreed, agreed upon, the other one said it wasn't. And so it was a. Our word versus their word kinda thing. And so as part of the informal resolution, we had agreed to adopt. Language, you know, kind of a checklist when we're going into closed session. We've been into, you know. Numerous closed sessions since then, and they've all been done the same way, but. Just kind of a reminder of going in closed session, what we need to be doing. And. This would be adopted and all boards would have to follow that. And then this is, when the checklist could get filed with the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we, uh. Adopt this. Checklist for total sessions.
I'll second it.
Then move and second it. Any discussion?
Wait, so everybody's clear, nothing in the code. That says you have to do some, a checklist of some sort. We're doing this. And we're probably setting the, setting this up for the rest of the state where. Other places will have to go through some type of checklist. Because right now, the, the code did not address specifically how to go into it, just that there was, I said, agreed. So I got no complaint with this. I think this is fine. I just wanna make that was recorded. We're setting, we're setting. To the state now.
Any other discussion? Here again, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next. Discussion and possible action on resolution eleven dash twenty-four, that's twenty twenty-five A. Approving informal resolution for Iowa Public Information Board. Case number twenty-five F C zero zero one eight. Essentially, we have to approve a resolution, uh, saying that. We've agreed to this resolution with. Um, Iowa Public Information Board and, um, Tammy Wise. It does have to be read into the record and so we have to kinda read it word for word. Um. Any volunteer?
I'll do it if you want.
Go ahead, Dave.
Resolution eleven dash twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five A. A resolution approving informal resolution for Iowa Public Information Board case number twenty-five F C. Colon zero zero one eight. Whereas Tama County is a party to Tammy Wise, the Tama County Board of Supervisors, case number. Twenty-five F C colon zero zero one eight before the Iowa Public Information Board. Whereas Tama County wishes to resolve Iowa Public Information Board case number twenty-five F C colon zero zero one eight. Whereas the Tama County Board of Supervisors adopted a closed session checklist, checklist policy on November twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Whereas in resolution of Iowa Public Information Board case number twenty-five F C colon zero zero one eight. The Tama County Board of Supervisors adopts a revised closed session checklist policy attached with this resolution. That includes the requirement that the board receive. The employees' permission in writing it or in open session prior to going into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code section twenty-five. Point five, in parentheses, one, in parentheses, I. Whereas Iowa Public Information Board case number twenty-five F C colon zero zero one eight. The Tama County Board of Supervisors will complete a training related to open meetings and public records on December eighth, twenty twenty-five. With the Iowa Public Information Board. Whereas the Tama County Board of Supervisors formally approves the attached informal resolution for Iowa Public Information Board. Case number twenty-five F C colon zero zero one eight attached. And a copy of the informal resolution shall be included with the meeting minutes. Whereas the Board of Supervisors shall read the terms of the informal resolution. Into the November twenty-four, twenty twenty-five meeting, upon approval of this resolution. Whereas the Tama County Auditor shall provide the Iowa Public Information Board Executive Director with a copy of the minutes. And the included informal resolution following the approval of the meeting minutes. Therefore, be resolved by the Tama County Iowa Board of Supervisors. That the attached informal resolution for Iowa Public Information Board case number twenty-five F C colon zero zero one eight. Is adopted by Tama County and that the Tama County Board of Supervisors and Tama County shall comply with the terms of the informal resolution stated above.
So is that a motion?
Do we have to read this one too, though?
We do. I'm gonna have the motion and then read.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution. That's twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five A.
I'll second it, second it.
Oh, you want me to read it? On February tenth, twenty twenty-five, Tammy Wise filed formal complaint twenty-five F C colon zero zero one eight alleging that the Tama County Board of Supervisors board. Violated Iowa Code chapter twenty-one. The IPIB accepted this complaint at its meeting on February twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Background, Tama County is a county in central Iowa which is governed by a five-member Board of Supervisors. Until February twenty twenty-five, Tammy Wise was employed as a human resource manager for Tama County. In early twenty twenty-five, the board contracted with Paul Group, a human resources independent contractor. To perform an audit of the county's Office of Human Resources. On February third, twenty twenty-five, the board held a regularly scheduled meeting which included. The agenda item possible close session for discussion and possible action. Under Iowa Code twenty-one point five point one G, twenty-one point five point one H. Twenty-one point five point one I. During the ses- session, which lasted approximately one hour. Five supervisors met privately with Group and Wise to consider the latter's potential discharge. Following the closed session, the board returned to open session and voted three to two to terminate Wise's employment with Tama County. Decision which was formalized on February tenth, twenty twenty-five. According to the board's response and signed affidavits. Wise received prior notice from Group on January thirty, thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. That the possible close session agenda would be concerning her and that it would. Be her decision whether or not she wanted the discussion to be in private. Wise attended the February third session. After. Approximately an hour spent on the agenda items, the board entered a brief recess. During the recess, Group allegedly had a one-on-one conversation with Wise outside the meeting room. Which he asked whether she wanted a closed session and Wise stated. Something to the effect of, of course, I wanted it in closed session. I don't want all of this out in public. The board then relied on Group to enter closed session with Wise in attendance. According to Wise's own, own signed affidavit. Wise never had the opportunity to review Group's email prior to the meeting as it was sent on January thirty-first, a Friday. And the meeting began at eight thirty AM on February the, the following Monday. Wise asserts that she regularly attended meetings and had no prior notice that the closed session item on the agenda would be about her. As she was not named and the only indication of the closed session's purpose came from the three code sections cited. The agenda did not mention Wise's name or position, or did it say the determination of an employee would be considered. Wise agrees that she spoke with Group following the brief recess and that Group told her the session would be about her when asked. However, Wise alleges that she was never asked whether she wanted. A closed session and never requested one from the board either directly or through. On February tenth, twenty twenty-five, Wise filed formal complaint twenty-five F C colon zero zero one eight alleging that the board. Violated chapter twenty-one by going into closed session under Iowa Code. Twenty-one point five one I without an affirmative request. From Wise as the employee whose discharge was being considered. Pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-three point six, five and six, IPIB staff reviewed. All audio recordings available for the February third, twenty twenty-five meeting. Based on this review, there was no question that the closed session was held to evaluate the professional. Competency of an individual whose discharge was being considered. And that the closed session could reasonably be found necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation. Iowa Code twenty-one point five one I. The sole dispute between the parties is whether Wise requested closed session, which is. Which is the subject of directly conflicting affidavits signed by Group and Wise. Following mediation. Parties were able to reach an informal resolution intended to prevent similar open meeting issues arising in future closed sessions. Applicable law, a governmental body may hold a closed session only by affirmative public vote of either. Two-thirds of the members of the body or all of the members present at the meeting. The governmental body. May hold a closed session only to the extent that closed session is necessary for any of the following reasons. Since that enough. I to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance or discharge is being considered when. Necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to the individual's reputation. And the individual requests a closed session. Iowa Code twenty-one point five one. All, so the informal resolution is all parties acknowledge that Tama County Board of Supervisors denies any wrongdoing or violation of the law. But has agreed to an informal resolution for the stated purpose of saving time and tax credit money. All parties further acknowledge that IPIB has not made. Any findings of wrongdoing or violation of law against, in this case. Pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-three point nine, IPIB presents the following terms for an informal resolution of this matter. One, the informal resolution will be formally approved at a meeting of the Tama County Board of Supervisors. And the following terms shall be read into the record. The board will include a copy of this informal resolution in its meeting minutes and will provide. IPIB staff with a copy of the minutes demonstrating approval. Two, the board will develop an official policy for the conduct of closed session meetings. Held pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one point five one I. Which shall include a requirement the board obtain a request for a closed session. From the individual whose profi- professional competency will be evaluated either in writing or during. Open session in a manner which allows board members to consider. The request and memorialize it in the minutes of the meeting. Prior to entering any closed session for this purpose. Three, all members of the Tama County Board of Supervisors will complete a training related to open meetings and public records. The training will be arranged by the board and conducted with IPIB during an open meeting. Terms of the informal resolution will be concluded within sixty days of the date of approval of this informal resolution by all parties upon showing of proof of compliance. The IPIB will dismiss this complaint as successfully resolved. This informal resolution has been reviewed and approved by the following. Thank Mark. I don't know if we all signed, it's like, oh, you see, there's only one spot, so. Yep. That is it.
Yeah.
So Mike, we're. Does Tammy get a chance to sign this?
I know she approved, she approved it, I guess, but I don't have a signed copy, but she was okay with the wording.
It's have one typo on the front page.
Yeah.
Concerning. The bottom.
She's concerned.
Has really.
Get part of your motion for.
Yes, absolutely. Give the chairman. Mission is on this.
Do we need to make anything, say. Do we need to make anything in?
I think so, I think we fix it.
I agree, but just to say that.
Well, we'll have to have the lawyers fix it cuz we don't have the word document. That was something that they put together.
That's not fixing. For us, I know.
Do you need, I hope they have time to post the agenda.
Yeah.
So we should.
Yep, so talk with us on that. I do.
And thirty.
Who was the first motion?
Do you think so? What's that?
All second.
Okay.
Sorry. Two seconds. Anybody want?
I'll make that motion.
Sure.
I think that's good, abortion.
Four zero comma, three, three, six, period, three, three. A hundred forty thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. And I make that motion, we approve them. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed.
Much carries. The comments again? Anybody?
So is this the settlement of the whole thing?
No.
Okay. As he said.
Just the IPIB, the.
Well, I was wondering, uh, Salt Creek two, what's the? How far advanced is that? They got the cup beyond it.
Best thing we know is there are hearings coming up in December on the substation, for the cut for the substation.
And they already have the cup for the twenty-seven, up to twenty-seven turbines as well.
Um, on the. Salt Creek one, there I was wondering who's. Wind rolled, did they peel off the edge of the road this? In the ditch. I haven't been up there lately to see if that's taken out. Did, did, did they do that or will we do that?
They did that. And that'll be their responsibility then. They will get that out of there. They will get that out of there.
I've heard of a few cases of that too, so it's something when they go for their drive, they need to look in ditches. Obviously, they're gonna know to do that anyway, but, yep, I've heard of that too.
So maybe make it a checklist.
Releasing the. Releasing these roads that they won't. Release that until. By spring, I mean, all the rock is good rock and not the junk rock. You guys won't release it until then, yeah?
But we're gonna follow the contract, but.
So. It's amazing. How tall these turbines are. I was at Daisert yesterday. And you can see that flood from Daisert. It's clear over. Just the ones that are there, not the ones that are going to possibly go up on Dupont. You could see them even without the lights way over the east edge of Daisert. It is totally amazing how tall they are. You could see them even without the lights way over the east edge of Dizert. It is totally amazing how tall they are.
The sun can see it to the east.
To the east. To the east, to Benton County, huh? So. It is not gonna surprise me when the lights start flashing. How many people are gonna come. Right now, they are easy to ignore, but boy, when there's sixty-plus Vienna. Lights. It's going to be quite, quite an eye for them. People will be so glad that they're not living with them, them, the people that don't have them in their backyard. And it is amazing also how close some of these turbines are to residents, like not just Heather. But like Heather, because hers is really visible, but boy, they're like so close. And that's going to. Really be a topic. When up to twenty-seven more are completed. What is the completion date for the next twenty-seven at this point? Not any further negotiation. There isn't one. So they, they can go into twenty twenty-seven to put those up, twenty twenty-eight?
Oh, no, there's some timeline that the leg- that the legislation put. They have to start building by next summer, but I can't remember what the completion date is. They have to be done by. I don't.
What would happen, this is a question you may not know, but so since basically wind energy is old hat now, it's, it's very inefficient. What would happen if they just did not put them up and wanted to do something different, like? I don't know. And we don't know everything that's gonna be coming down the pipe for energy, but is it, can they do that or would that be a whole new? Contract?
Only whenever their lease says, I would think.
A lot happens in a few months right now in the, in the world, in the United States. Yeah, a lot happened. I mean, already they got the contracts on the land, so I'm not questioning that. I'm just one questioning, um, what projects they made, decided to. And David's talked about, um, old. Old energy many, many times. He's brought that up and it's a true story. Carolyn has too. That wind is old.
This is the. So he said. Discuss. Should we revise your remarks? Cause they did some stuff last week you wanted to discuss. Just everything is to. Throw out there. And then. Roadblocks. First off, isn't able to. Installation has been planned. To booking phone lines over. There was a, some type of a PIN number that was issued. Particularly to. Consider now as conservation, um, and. To the Orion system, so. Pursuing that, I sent an email off to our asking who is the person that won't allow them to just go up the chain that. And they've been overriding. The other solution would be we just cancel that phone number and issue a new phone number for conservation, so. Ready to get new phones out there. Purchase the, the wall works, the, the, that's the power supply for the bones. And we should have enough to put them all in the dorm. Um, so we're, we're moving along, but that's a. That's where we stand with the IT world. So we'll have the tomorrow. And a meeting for tomorrow, so.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Good second. All those in favor say aye. Well, shoot, here. Where is it?
Dan, you have a great.